Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on May 14th. And welcome to the Rutland Town School Board Meeting for the month of May. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'd like to make a few changes on the agenda tonight. I'd like to switch the RTS Staff and Student Highlights to Before Staff and Community Comments. I'd also like to move Contract Recommendations to After Executive Session. And I'd like to add the GRCSU Vision Mission Statement under the Chairs Report. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
To approve the agenda with the changes.
Approve the agenda with changes.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Tim. And now we'll have our Staff and Student Highlights.
Oh, perfect. Do you want us to stay around here?
Um, it's up to you. If you want to go there, say that.
Sure. Good evening. We are the 4th grade team here at Rutland Town School. My name is Jen Chapdulane, this is Sabrin Spensley, Catherine Dugay, and Catherine Beach, who's our superstar special educator of the team. I did send an email earlier today. I hope everybody received it. And it was just about our science fair that's coming up. And I sent last year's video because I know, I think almost everyone in here has either been a parent that has struggled through the stress of a science fair, or has come to see our science fair, or both. Thank you for your struggle. So, we wanted to highlight, there's a lot of really great things that have happened this year in 4th grade. And we have 49 students in 4th grade. So, we're very lucky to have three teachers to navigate this adventure. But we thought we would highlight science this year, sharing with the board. Mostly because in 5th grade, they test for science, which is fairly new. We used to test in 4th grade. And we're testing in 5th grade now. So, we do a lot of science stuff in 4th grade. A lot of hands-on projects, a lot of collaboration. And we wanted to share that tonight. So, I was going to talk to you a little bit about, most recently, we have worked with Bailey Sanders in 6th grade. And her 6th graders have come to each of our classrooms at different times to work on kinetic and potential energy, which has been really fun because her students led the lesson. And we got to step back and just watch this, like, magic transform in our classrooms. So, they did a rubber band shoot, which was always fun to shoot rubber bands. They did a wind-up car experiment, and then a ball drop experiment. And then we're working with them this week to try out their roller coasters. So, the students have done a lot of hands-on with kinetic and potential energy. We also, in previous years and maybe this year, have worked with Mrs. McDougall in middle school to do a lot of hands-on science there. So, it's been really fun, and the kids have loved it. I think anytime we could bring hands-on learning into the classroom, and toys and trinkets, we get all the focus that we need. So, it's been really, really nice. And we've done a lot of reflecting on these experiments. Students have had to do some writing on it. They have to use math. So, even though it's science, we're going across the board with all of their academics. And I think it's been great. So, big thank you to Ms. Sanders for making that work, and her students, for 6th graders coming in. And they're so mature, and they can handle a group of 18 kids. It's just really, it's really awesome to see. So, that's where we've, that's our start, talking about just the collaboration that's been taking place. And I'll let Catherine talk a little about the science fair.
So, we're really excited. June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd, is our science fair for 4th grade. And since I've been teaching here, we've had, we've done this 4th grade science fair. It's been really fun. I remember doing a science fair when I was a student here. The kids get really excited. There's some really awesome topics that have been selected this year. So, they are busy working, conducting their experiments at home. We've even had some students tap into their classmates to be, to help with their experiment. And so, they're actively working on that. And they're going to be analyzing the results and ready to share out at the science fair. So, we would really love to have anyone that would like to come and check it out. It's a really, it's a fun day of science.
And I think this year also, Colin is one of our judges. So, we always try to get a school board member to be a judge that doesn't either have a student coming into or in 4th grade. So, Colin volunteered this year. And Paula Townsend.
Yep.
Right?
She's our teacher, and she also is actively involved in the Quunderfee.
And Mike and Sarah will be, Katie McDougall and Colby Haskock will be, and Linda Mullin. They'll be our science judges this year. So, that's really, we get a nice variety of everybody.
And I can't judge, though, because I try to help out with a lot of the kids. I'm usually a taste tester. For a lot of the foods, I get to experiments. I somehow get thrown into that for every, for every one of them. But I do like to support my students that I work with, and all the other students. And if kids are having trouble at home or need supplies, Kate, Daily, and I will kind of help out in that aspect, too.
And our interventionists have also been really helpful with some of those kiddos who need that extra support that they're not getting at home.
So, if you could put it on your calendar to come see us on June 3rd. The kids are nervous but excited. But there are quite a few science fair projects this year. So, give yourself some time to check them all out. And community members, too. You should come and check it out on June 3rd. 8:45 it starts. It's in the cafeteria.
About 10:00. You can stop in any time.
Do you want to come?
8:45 in the morning?
Yeah, rise and shine. Grab a coffee. You'll be fine.
That's why I, 8:45 AM may be a bedtime.
Yes. The other classes, students throughout the school will be invited as well to attend. And that's also really motivating and exciting for them to have their peers, younger and older, come and check out their projects and their hard work.
They look forward to going in 4th grade.
Yeah.
Because they know the science fair's a sure thing.
Parents don't, though.
No.
Sorry. Do you guys have any questions about the science fair? Any of the experiments that we've allowed to happen?
I had the opportunity to see it the last couple of years. And it's fantastic seeing what the kids come up with, and the variety of experiments, and their thought processes, and how they explain it. It's really fun.
I love seeing it.
Great project.
They're using all the skills they've learned throughout the year to collect data and write up their reports. And it's impressive. It's really.
And just the communication skills that come into play, too, with standing up and presenting, and having that confidence to speak in front of, you know, a larger group. So, there's a lot of things tied in.
Yeah. Another role of mine is I will have some kids come and practice that aren't used to presenting or reading off index cards. So, we make sure that they feel really comfortable going into that situation.
And then to wrap up our science unit for the year, we were able to schedule a field trip to Vins for May 28th. So, we did a lot of work with the internal and external structures of owls, and what makes them great hunters. So, they, and dissected owl pellets. That was very popular. And the kids are excited. We're going to go to Vins. And we have a program planned to learn more and see. A lot of kids haven't seen owls. So, it'll be really cool to, for them to have that opportunity. So, if you want to go to Vins on the 28th, we'll be there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for all your work with the budget. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I got a pet out of it. I got two pets.
Just let them leave, and then we'll do the public comment. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
You, too.
Alright. So, we will move on now to Teacher, Staff, and Community Comments. And I know you had something to say.
Right. I've got a short story to tell you and comment. My granddaughter is in 4th grade here. Last year, she was in 3rd grade here. And she came home from school one day in June. And she calls me Poppy, you know. She says, "Poppy, what's it mean June is Gay Pride Month?" I says, "What?" She says, "Well, I saw that at the bulletin board on school, at school." I says, "Well," I says, "let me tell you something." I says, "June is not Gay Pride Month at our house." I says, "Nor is any other month." And so, my concern is, you know, is the, is the primary focus here still academic education? Or is it turned into indoctrination? Because I'm not having any interest. And a lot of folks that I know of in the town here aren't interested in, in political or this left-wing woke nonsense, you know? And I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here on this thing, you know?
Well, thank you for your comments and concern. I can assure you that there is definitely academic focus here at Rutland Town School. And that covers, you know, ideologies, left, right. It, you know, it's not just one side.
Well, I kind of hate to, to think that, that what we taught our kids for values, and subsequently our grandkids' values, is being, they're getting a conflicting message here, you know? And I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think any political or ideological stuff has its place in a public school setting, you know?
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comments? Okay. Moving on. Colin is not here. And he had asked if we could move the budget conversation to when he can be on. He was asked to do a presentation at the Rutland City School Board Meeting. So, so if we can move, we'll just skip over old business for right now, and move to, and skip over new business, and go to, I guess, Consent Agenda because Louis is not here for the financial reports either. So, if you have any comments or questions on the financial reports, please let Louis know. So, Director's Orders. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants for this month.
Make a motion to approve the warrants?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. And we'll do an approval of the minutes from April 29th. I'll entertain a motion.
Am I allowed to second that motion even?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Abby.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Approval of the minutes from April 9th, our regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve those notes from April 9th.
Thank you, Abby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we do not have the approval, the minutes from May 6th yet. So, we'll postpone that to next meeting. Superintendent's Report.
Thanks, Tina. I have a few items just to bring to the public. So, this is the end of, you know, getting close to the end of the year. It's hard to believe that we're looking at five, you know, five weeks left to school. The year has gone by very quickly. So, a lot of the focus now is just on wrapping things up, you know, getting ready for next year. And, you know, along that lines, last week at the GRCSU Board meeting, the GRCSU Board voted to approve Waving One Snow Day for students and staff. As a result, the last student day, now this has been communicated, just want to reiterate this, will be June 14th for students and then staff. Their last day will be June 17th. And so, that, don't believe that's going to impact the graduation date at all, correct? So, so the graduation date stays June 12th, correct?
Yep.
So, make sure, I know Mike will talk a little bit more about the durings of the report as well. So, we also have finished up with VICAP testing across the SU, as well as we'll develop things at the Fastbridge to move by the end of the month, first week in June. And once we have those results, we'll give the bill administrators time to process that, look through this, and then we'll probably present this to the Board during the summer sometime to take a look at where VICAP was at, as well as our Fastbridge from fall to spring. And then look at, you know, give Sarah and Mike an opportunity and the staff to, you know, to talk about what the results mean, and what that does, and what impact it'll have on curriculum moving into the following year. And the rest of the, you know, my report really is just informational. So, the one thing that, I know there is a thing around PCBs. I did see that the bill that was being pushed to halt PCB testing was, was shot down. So, which doesn't really impact Rutland Town per se, but that will still continue to move forward. So, PCB testing at all over at SU schools, so, in Rutland Town. And we'll keep the community and the Board updated with when we have more information. Okay? So, any questions?
Thank you. Principal's Report.
So, Sarah, she is at DC with our 8th grader. So, I've got our principal's report for us. Our, just highlighting a few things. Our 4th grade green team in middle school students picked up trash on Friday, 5/2. That was Green Up Day. So, they went around the, the school on the outside, to the playground, to the fields. They went to the trails, too, and walked around those. That was the favorite part, is the trails, as always. And picked up anything that was on the ground. We, Mr. Treya and Mr. Hood helped us. And they had, we had supplies from them and everything, so they had a great time. They also did that for Earth Day as well. So, they went out and wanted to do that, too. The teachers are doing their end-of-year goal meetings with myself and Sarah here. So, we look at student data and goals with them. They have their class list started, and are doing transition meetings as well. They, Getting to the Why. So, they have a group of middle school students, Mrs. Manneville and myself have met with. And they, we had our Getting to the Why, you might remember, Community Dialogue Night. Maybe, I think it was a couple of months ago at this point. And so, in response to that data, the students are considering, like, a relaxation sort of space in the school, and where they could go and have, like, a break from, if they need a break from anything. So, they're kind of working through that right now, and are inviting teachers, having that conversation with them. And space is very, very limited. So, yeah, they're trying to work through that, which is great. It's a good problem of practice. Mrs. Manneville, she's taken the 8th graders to Stafford Tech on May 22nd. And fortunately, VICAP is completed. Kate Manneville is huge, huge help in that, in making sure everyone completes hers. That is the statewide assessment that took over for S-Back. So, that is all done. Also, shout out to Mr. Bertoloni here in the library. He was super helpful in that whole process as well, getting makeups done. Kids needing extra time, things like that. They, as Chris already mentioned, the Fastbridge, so we're wrapping that up as well. And then EST, we actually have two more rounds of meetings. Today, we had our one, one of the three that's listed on here. So, we have two more before the end of the year, and then a couple of meeting times for prep for next year. Physical plant stuff is all there. Not well-versed in that, but Chris updated you on the PCBs. And then lots of happening celebrations and upcoming events. So, but the big highlight, of course, would be our graduation 6:00 PM, June 12th here at the school. And I'm excited to see it for the first time. We have challenges on there, of course, short staff. Pre-K subs especially, because they need extra certification and training and all of that. And then we are, I know you asked for a summer school update as well. So, we have two who are willing to teach middle school. We don't have any applicants for the elementary school opening. So, we have two for that as well. We do have it posted on School Spring, and we don't have any applicants for that as of right now. I haven't heard of teachers interested. We've, of course, we always ask the teachers here, and nobody's reached out for that. And then resource requests, looking to hire a special educator and a parent educator at this time. And of course, as usual, substitutes, and that's our enrollment. Right now, we're at 3:58.
Mike, if we don't get two teachers for summer school, then what, what does that mean? What does that equate to?
We could have summer school just for middle school. It just depends on, I don't have it in front of me, what the, the recommendations are from teachers for middle school students. But if we have enough for middle school, then we could have a middle school one. But we couldn't do elementary and middle.
What I mean is, if students need summer school, and they don't get it because we don't have it, then what does that, like, how does that work?
They just, they don't get summer school.
So, then that, that means that they don't get the extra support they need during the summer, so that when they start in the fall, they, you know, there's a little bit more support needed at the beginning than if we had summer school?
Yeah, most likely.
We also had the opportunity, if students need access, we can look at across the SU as well. So, if they, say they're, there's a 3rd grader who is looking for summer school, or it's top junior, we could look at one of our other schools, the SU, to offer that programming for them as well, so. But it is difficult when it's a staffing issue. You know, our staff, you know, they have their summer breaks, and job man plans, and that's just the reality of that situation, so.
I know you have Spanish. I don't know if now's a good time on that, too.
Yeah.
Mrs. Sunderland has joined us. She's online there. And I know she and I had chatted earlier. She came and visited in the fall, and gave some numbers on how our kiddos are doing over at Rutland High. So, she, thank you, Mrs. Sunderland, for coming. Just wasn't sure if you had specific questions, or, or anything you were interested in.
So, it was my understanding, when we last spoke in the fall, that because the time that students are taught was decreased, that she was going to give us kind of an update of how it went throughout this year. I don't know if she has enough information yet. It's middle of May. But just, you know, how far did she get, having less time to work with the students? Are they ready for Spanish 2, as much as they have been in the past? Those type of questions.
Okay.
That's kind of what I think we discussed in the fall, that we wanted kind of an update.
I'll let Teresa, if you want to speak to any of that, or if you need more time.
Sure, sure. No, I can give some feedback of where we are at. Because I have children at Rutland High School, I have a good relationship and can keep pretty good tabs on where Rutland High School is at, and what their program is, and what they're on track for. And speaking earlier in the year with Rutland High School teachers, they actually moved their chapter, a chapter earlier, which allowed us to let go of a chapter, because they were going to cover it. So, which really worked out perfect for our program, in which I was not, it wasn't necessary for me to cover as much material. So, it really worked out perfect. We are on track to finish the material that we need to, to prepare our students for the high school curriculum, and a curriculum at Rutland High School. And I have, I have no concerns. I think it's been a great year. I found that with me taking on 8th grade, it really allows great continuity. Because typically, when I pass the students off to Peter Patterson, you know, sometimes there can be a learning, learning where students' skill levels are at. And I found that me being able to hold on to those students, I had a little bit tighter reign on them. And I pick up where we left off, and it's, it's a very smooth transition for the, for the 8th graders. And I'm looking forward to see where they are, where they head off to in the, in the fall, and excelling as our students have been in the high school programs.
So, Teresa, when you say that they are ready for the high school curriculum, are they, are the majority of the students ready for Spanish 2?
Yes, that's correct. Some students have opted not to go on to Spanish 2. And they have, with their families, selected to stay in Spanish 1. And of course, that's their parents' choice. It's, it's their choice. They might get feedback from their, our guidance counselor here. Sometimes it depends on the level of classes that they're taking at Rutland. It also depends on what semester their Spanish is offered. If they're taking a Spanish 1, or 2, or 2 honors, Rutland High School might not have that class when they want it. So, there's a lot of factors that, that come into play there. But, yes, our, the students who are going into Spanish 2 by their family's choice, or their choice, they, in my opinion, are ready. And I took part in the recommendations with our guidance counselor.
Are you able to say what percentage of your students are going into Spanish 2, or that you recommended for Spanish 2?
I don't have that information. That might be something that Ms. Manneville would have. And in the past, Rutland High School has not, has not been giving that information easily to us. But that would be something that Mike, Sarah, or Mrs. Manneville would have.
But you would have how many, you thought that should go into Spanish 2, right?
I'm sorry?
You would have how many students you recommended for Spanish 2? Not, not necessarily that they took it, but how many students?
Yes, Mrs. Manneville has that information.
That you recommended?
Correct, that I recommended, yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
Tina?
Yes.
If I may, could you speak just a little louder? I know you're talking that way, but I don't hear it well back here.
Sure, I'll try. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Hey, Teresa, have you, like, like vocabulary? Are kids keeping up with the vocabulary, like, now that there's a wider span of days in between? Like, do you see any, any decrease in that? Because I know, like, consistency with, especially in a different language, is super important. And I didn't know if there was any lapse there, even for some of your, like, even your 7th graders.
So, we, in years past, we've gone from every other day to, this year, we go to a Monday, Wednesday. And then the, another class would have it on a Tuesday, Thursday.
Got you.
So, your Monday, Wednesday class, I would see, obviously, a student on a Wednesday, and I wouldn't see them again until Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And so, how I've adapted is, you know, beginning the classes with vocabulary, vocabulary practices, and providing lots of input around the room as far as materials. The kids have, you know, vocabulary sheets in front of them, in their notebooks. Do I, do I see a difference? I honestly don't.
Okay.
I haven't gotten any feedback that, you know, kids feel that it's too much, or overwhelming. I, I find that I give lots of different curriculum, present curriculum in different ways, whether it's on paper, or on the computer, through games, and in-class activities verbally.
Perfect. Questions?
Hey, thanks for teaching the ABCs and Spanish.
Hey, no problem.
I appreciated that.
You tell me what's up, you tell me what songs you would like to hear at home. And I could listen all.
Really enjoyed that one. Appreciate it.
Glad to hear it's going home.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Thank you for the update, Teresa.
Yes, any other questions or concerns?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We'll move on to resignations. We had one resignation from Sean DuBois, who will be an interventionist down in the Wellspring District. I will take a motion to. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll just, while Colin's getting ready, we'll go over the policies. These are all second-read policies. The E-10 Options-Based Response to Violent Intruder Drills, Fire Drills, and Emergency Preparedness. E-13 Prevention of Conflict of Interest in Procurement. E-16 Security Cameras. F-18 Local Wellness Policy. And G-1 Curriculum Development and Coordination. I'll take a motion to approve those as second reads into official policies.
Second read?
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Alright. Now that Colin's here, let's move back up to Old Business.
You did contract recommendations.
I'm sorry.
You did contract recommendations, correct?
No, we moved that to after Executive Session. No, we moved that to after executive session.
Just want to make sure, okay.
Yep.
Give him a second, thank you.
Thank you, no problem. So, we had an update to the budget as of today. Louis let us know that the yield that we were told last week of the $10,005 was not what was approved by the House. And what was approved by the House was?
Well, no, the General Assembly.
The General Assembly.
The House passed one, Senate, was when Colmore came on, his number, but when they finally finalized their bill on Friday, the number came to?
Nine, nine eight three nine.
Nine eight three nine, which is going to the governor.
Nine eight nine three is what he wrote down. Is it nine eight three nine?
Nine eight nine three, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Nine eight nine, nine eight nine three.
And the income yield at $10,001.10 and the non-homestead rate at 1.391 and the additional one-time tax credit at 13%.
Not 17.
Can you please? Will you please repeat that a little slower?
Sure.
Thanks.
The, the proposed, the, the, the bill that passed both the House and Senate at a General Assembly came at a property yield of nine eight nine three. The income yield is $10,001.10. The non-homestead rate is 1.391. And the additional one-time tax credit is 13% for the FY '25 tax bills. So they're sending that to the governor.
So that obviously affects the numbers in our budget. And Louis was not?
It, it doesn't impact the budget, it impacts the tax rate.
The tax rate.
The, the $10,005 that Senator Colmore stated would be $1.55, but with a new yield of nine eight nine three, it goes to $1.57.
Correct.
So, but it does not impact the budget.
It doesn't affect the budget, just the taxes at the end.
With the new yield.
So, the original, last time we voted, with the public, I should say. So our, our estimated school tax rate was 1.6. So it went down three pennies, is that what you have, Colin, too? Last time it was $1.60?
Our first budget.
Our last vote was $1.60, right? So now it just went down to $1.57, so three cents. So given that information, I just wanted to have a discussion if we wanted to do anything else with the budget today. Seeing that, there's no discussion. Let's talk about the, when we want to vote. So Carrie Clark let me know of certain dates that she will be available. She's not available a lot of dates. I think that we had talked about last time about doing this in maybe early June, either June 4th or June 11th to keep it on a Tuesday, because people are used to voting on Tuesdays. She's not, she, nor I believe Susan McGee, neither one of them are available either of those evenings. According to her, she does not think it's necessary that either one of them are there. But we haven't officially double-checked all statutes to make sure because we're not.
Can we move it a week earlier, to the 28th?
She's not there that day either. She's not there the Tuesday, the 28th, Tuesday, the 4th, Tuesday, the 11th, or Tuesday, the 18th. So if we want to keep it on a Tuesday and make it easier for voters, we can still pick that date today, but it's just a little bit tentative if we find out after we check all the statutes that she actually has to be here to certify the vote, which we're not 100% clear on. She doesn't think she has to be here. And Susan's not here either.
On the 11th.
There, I guess they have vacation that they're going to lose if they don't use it, so they're using it. Thinking that this was a good time of year, because everything's kind of usually set, but. So she did give me some other dates that aren't Tuesdays, that would work. June 25th is the only Tuesday that she's available, that it would work.
June what?
June 25th. And I feel like that's a little late.
You say easier just because that's normal practice for?
That's what they had recommended when we first missed the budget. They had said, they had recommended keeping it on a Tuesday just because people are used to Tuesdays. She is available Wednesday, the 29th and 30th, which is?
Of what?
Of May. And she's available Wednesday, June 19th, Thursday, June 20th as well. But that's kind of late.
That's getting late?
Yeah.
I mean, Thursday sounds like Tuesday, so we could do it on a Thursday. Just saying.
Is there a prerogative to, uh, take the mail-in ballot opportunity with, with the board offered, or do we not know that?
We, we have, that's next. Well, that, that's later in the decision-making. We haven't decided on the ballot yet.
Here's my concern, if so many people get out of town right after school ends, a lot of people.
I, I agree, I think we need to have it by?
We have to.
June 11th or earlier.
That week of June 10th, like that week.
Or earlier.
Or earlier. I, that makes me nervous going after school ends for this last, well, I just feel like, and I know so many people that are.
What about May 30th?
Sounds like Tuesday, right? You're on board?
I mean, I just think we should get this out.
May 30th, that's.
It's in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So, a few, few comments. One is, you know, I think we've been approached by the community at large about information, which we're trying to get to them. So I don't, in one sense, I don't want to, like, compress the vote because we're trying to get out to every community member to educate them on what's happened, what we have control of, what we don't have control over, what, what the steps are. But to Abby's point, you know, we also want to try to get as many people voting as possible. And when school's out, people are gone, I mean, also potentially, and I'm, I'm not going to think about this, but you know, like, worst case, we fail, we, do we have time to turn around another vote before July 1? Obviously, June 25th, we don't.
No.
To the next conversation, I'm, I'm not coached up to speed on like what we've actually have to warn, how long can we go? I mean, my prerogative would be let's get as quick as we can, hit the street running with getting people information, knocking on doors, but statutorily, how long do we have to warn?
I think it's just seven days.
Ten days, right, ten days?
It's 10 days, I thought it was seven. It's 10 now?
What was, what was that, quote, or warning?
The warning, yes.
What was the timeframe?
Uh, we were told 10 days, so.
Twenty, Title 17, 2640, says seven and five.
I'll talk to our attorney and verify.
No, that's all right.
Our attorney, but if I says 10 days, so.
I can read a statute.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that's a.
But 11, if you're doing 10 or 11, you're all fat.
Yeah, right, I mean, I'd be more worried if we're saying five and you're saying seven, so we're 12 and 10, so we have three extra days to get it out there.
Is that business days or weekends count too, honestly?
Weekends count too, I think.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Is that's a good question though, do weekends count? They do, right?
I would assume it's business days, but.
Maybe not.
I think if we do, you know, 10 days will be fine, but, but, you know, still be within that seven days.
Yeah.
Our goal would be to get it out as soon as possible, we don't want to cut it too short. You know, we want to warn those so people have an opportunity to, you know.
I mean, I like the June 11th date, so it's going to be interesting, I'd like to know what, I wish we knew the answer on whether or not the clerk had to be there to certify or, and what, who takes over that procession from that. At that point, you know.
So.
I mean, part of my concern from like the mail-in ballots the last time was that the ballots arrived in the mailbox before any information even got out. So anyone that, you know, didn't come to a community meeting or didn't get any further feedback, they could have quickly checked no, put it back in the mail, and then we get some information later, you know, that's my only concern, but.
When would we? No, I'm just saying, when would we know if they can certify it without her there? Because I'd hate to wait. And then two days, three days come along, and then we've lost that window of her being there until the end of June.
I don't, I, I don't know.
Got a hand raise?
That, that ballot went out just in the neck of the time to support the 20-day rule of the statute.
Yeah.
So it had to go in the mail.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I mean.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, the, I mean, the timing was, I think we, like, sent our stuff to the printer, so we were, like, that was in purgatory and then that happened. So I'm not suggesting that it was advised for any particular, you know, it was just kind of poor, 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 it was just poor timing in general on how our stuff kind of hit the road too, so. So just going to, going to keep that in mind as we make this plan.
What was the moral of it?
May 25th, 6th, whatever that Monday is, yeah. You're, are you on the Board of Civil Authority?
I am.
So do you know if the town clerk has to be present?
Be my interpretation of the statute that no, the BCA can appoint a charged affair of each of the polling place as a terminology. But as far as the resolution of the count after the vote is closed, I would have some reservations as to the preservation of ballots. Securing, locking them up. I've been on the BCA since 2002, with the exception of two years. And I have never not been present when the ballots weren't processed the evening immediately after the polls closed. Never researched.
But does the town clerk have to do it?
I.
That you don't know?
They've always been there, it's never, it's never come up, so I haven't researched it, Tina.
Yeah.
I, I've read many of the voting rules and regulations and I have made personal note as to their de facto presiding officer, that's the term, and the BCA can make alternate presiding officers for the polling places. You can't, you can't change the polling places, you can change the times, but you have to, unless one of these buildings burned down, you can't change a polling, excuse me, let me rephrase that. Unless one of these buildings become, become not available, and you have to notify the Secretary of State in the event a polling place changes.
So, the 29th is a K-4 concert here, it's a Wednesday.
Is it?
Well, that might be good.
A K-4 concert here, that would be a mess, actually.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to easily have it, I don't think.
Are you talking about the 20, which day, sorry?
The 29th. She, she's here the 29th and the 30th.
Yeah, we have our, we have a concert.
Will the 30th work?
Or is that, can people vote on their way to the concert? I wonder, I mean, setup logistically might be.
Well, it's at the school, it doesn't say where at the school. But I think it, it would be a mess for people coming into the concert. I mean, they.
It's nice in theory to have an event so people are inspired to do it, but it'll be a cluster.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just stop.
People are used to voting in the gym.
Be a good reminder, though, to get out, to come vote the next day.
Handing out these flyers.
What time's the concert start?
6:30. Teresa?
Oh, yeah.
Polls at 7? Voting was moved to the cafeteria or the lower lobby.
It's at 6:00 PM, actually, the concert.
Yeah, but it, it wouldn't be able to be there all day, that's the problem.
You'd have to have polls open 7 to 7, right?
7 to 7.
10 to 7.
Right, okay.
10 to 7 now?
They only have to be open 10 to 7, we prefer to not change the voting hours.
Yeah.
You would have to move.
All lunches.
Yeah, I think, it might actually not be a bad idea to have it the day after and just, like you said, hand out brochures, remind people to get out and vote the next day.
We could have a song about it. Find one.
There's nothing on the 30th?
Yep.
I mean, that would be a, a positive. And then Carrie's there and we don't have to worry about any tentativeness. It just means that we're going to have to hit the ground running, you know, this weekend and next, trying to sort out what we're going to communicate.
Yeah, I'm in favor, sooner the better. I'd rather not wrinkle any feathers between who's there and who's not there, if she's going to be there, let's.
Tim?
I'm on board.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, by consensus, then we will have the vote on May 30th, which is a Thursday, sounds like Tuesday.
Sounds like Tuesday.
Um, okay. Given that it's that close, I do not think we have time to send out ballots. So we'll just take that off the table. I think you need more time than 16 days.
Statutorily have to have 20 days.
That's what I thought, yeah, 20 days.
And you may bear in mind, the town clerk said there's about 108 people, I think was the number she said, of people who had requested mailed ballots. They have to, they can request them once for the whole calendar year so they can get town meeting and any subsequent ballots of the year. And I don't know anything about that statute.
Yeah.
If it doesn't make it, it doesn't make it, I think, because you only have to have that five-day warning, seven-day posting.
Right. All right, thank you.
What was that?
So he said he thinks it's probably just, if he gets there, it gets there for those, because with the special budget vote, we don't have the same, if we're not mailing ballots, we don't have the same length of time that we have to wait.
The people haven't, have requested them for the whole year, so any ballots that were going to go.
But to help them, we can try to have Louis update the numbers on the. um, warrant or the approval. What is it called? Whatever that is. The warning, yes, thank you. He'll, um, update those tomorrow and we can try to sign it tomorrow afternoon so that we can get that over to Carrie so she can start the process. It's a little short than twenty days, but hopefully they'll have enough time. So. All right, so communication. In front of you is something that Lily Hughes, who's a parent here, um, also part of the P T O, um, she came to our last meeting last week and she offered to help us make some communication brochures or pamphlet or, or whatever. And this is what she came up with. Um, Colin and I kind of helped. The numbers are not correct because of the yield change. So we will adjust that. Um, but just wanted you to take a look at it and see what you thought. And if it's missing anything you think is important.
I have no, uh, private resident of Rottentown has offered to fund this for us. So the printing and the goal is to hand them out and get active door to door. So there won't be a mailing cost, I don't believe, but, um, the cost of this marketing is not coming out of anyone's budget.
And I've had some residents that have offered to help us, um, distribute them too. Which is really nice. Um, I will make a note that this Q R code does not work. I think that there's, it cut off a little bit at the top. So we'll have to make sure that we shrink the margins a little bit.
I think with all, again, with all the questions we've been getting from, from the meetings we've had, a lot of people and obviously letters to the editor, articles in the paper, V T Digger, everything coming out of my computer that everyone's confused about what's what. So we're trying to compress the important things that the school offers. Obviously, the, the impacts that Act One Twenty Seven had, um, and highlight what, what impactfulness it'll have on your property taxes. Part of the key there was the, the, the backside. It's got a couple of examples of bringing in the income sensitivity. Um, my plan is to, to put a YouTube. It's not as simplistic as it sounds to calculate what yours was last year versus what you could potentially be looking at next year. It involves going to two different calculators in the Vermont State site using your property tax bill. So we thought it would be easiest to say YouTube helping someone kind of input the right things in the spreadsheet on the Excel, going through the various, you know, state websites to show where the impacts are for you personally or your household at least. With all the knowledge we have today, because we gotta change these numbers because what we had literally three days ago was slightly different. Um, so it's important.
Two days ago, almost. For us, we didn't know.
Maybe it's a few hours.
Yeah.
So just trying to give everyone as much real information, not misinformation of what's the impact in your property taxes. Um, and again, we, we have two pages, so it's not like we can write a white page. But, um, you know, what are the consequences if we don't pass this vote or subsequent votes, um, by July first? And just trying to get as much information in people's hands so they understand what's in front of them.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Funding this paperwork?
So, um, usually the, our district will pay for mailings. So we, we paid for this one. Um, but we had a, a resident in the town that has offered to pay for it. I'm not sure if he wanted to stay anonymous or not.
They?
They? They. He, they, she wanted to stay anonymous.
I don't know if they do either, but I'd like to ask them. They've reached out.
But it's, this is not the taxpayers paying.
No.
No, no.
It's actually a taxpayer.
I would say that would cross a line with conflict of interest.
Correct.
Right.
Now, this is a specific individual or family that wanted to help along.
And I'm actually not sure if it would cross the line, to be honest, because we, we do typically send out information and that is paid for by our district. And this is the same information, just put in a different format. And it's a little bit more reader friendly, I think.
I think the, the point I'd make is what you have in your left hand, you know, is, you know, is, is pretty much factual. I think the, the, what you have in your right hand is probably mixed with some political intent. And, and I think that's where you cross the line. If it's, if it's political intent, if it's factual.
It, it's all factual, actually. And some of it's even repeat from what we put on here. It's just put in, it's put in a nicer way and give, work through examples colorful. It's just, it's all facts. Yeah.
Well, if, if some individual is paying for it, I think that individual probably has a, an agenda.
I think, I think that they, I think the agenda is they would like this to pass. Um, but they also want to help the school and knowing that the school will have to pay more money to send out information to the voters because we, we need to inform the voters of what changes we've made and everything else. So it's just helping out all taxpayers by offering to, to pay for that.
Hey, I just, I'd ask you to go gently.
Yeah. So. Any other comments on it? Anything that you think it's missing? You're good?
I'm great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like.
Just gotta be shrunk down a little bit.
Yeah, just shrink it down, make sure the Q R code works. Um, so is that Q R code going to go to your YouTube or just the website?
I don't know. Figure out how to make a YouTube.
That's probably why it doesn't work.
Given that we want to do this A S A P.
Yeah.
It probably would make more sense just to go to the calculator.
Yeah.
Basically, no.
I mean, the calculator can be, I mean, it doesn't need to be a Q R code. It'd be the hyperlink.
Yeah.
But again, unless, it requires going to two different sites on the Vermont State site. You gotta go to took the twenty twenty-three calculator to plug in this year's data to see what, unless you know offhand, what your tax credit was. And then to, to project what your new tax credit is going to be, you have to then flip over to the twenty twenty-four calculator on the, on the state website and input your information. So it's not just, and it's, once you get there, it's plugging in the one seventy-one, our, our school code, going down, setting your house site value, then going into percent ownership, your municipal tax, um, that you gotta put in. But again, you can guesstimate that because it's not having an effect on the refund calculator, but you also have to take that house site value, times the tax rate, divide it by a hundred to get the actual tax. And then the very bottom is place your income for the year. And it's a lag, so it's gotta be putting your twenty twenty-three income for this year and your twenty twenty-two income for last year. So I'd love to be able to like have that as an explanation, but I just don't think the folks that are gonna try to figure it out, it's not that simple. Versus watching someone do it, click, 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 click. And the, the interesting fact coming out is that some people actually may see a tax decrease because of the, the tax credit increase they've done at the state level. So I think it's pretty impactful and important for those folks that may be saying no because they don't think they can afford it or they're angry to see that, hey, I'm not getting hurt on my property taxes and or it may be potentially going down. But that, that each, each household has.
But that's only for those that are making up to a certain amount with a house.
So those folks that are, again, on a tax basis, making ninety thousand or less, up to four hundred thousand dollars of their house value, they'll get the full value of the tax credit. That's increased thirteen percent for this particular year. And if you make between ninety and one twenty-eight, your house value credit goes up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of value. And you're also, to get more and more complex, but if you're, if you're on fixed income, making forty-seven thousand dollars or less, there's actually, I'm forgetting the terminology, there's a special carve out.
Circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker.
Short circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker, super circuit breaker tax credit that they offer, because then they bring in statutorily, using that income tax property yield, I said, which no one else even focuses on. There's a statutory ratio of income to property taxes that Vermont says you can't pay more than that, but you have to go through the calculations of our state and it may kick out. So it'll set that person's, um, property taxes lower if they're forty-seven thousand or below. So again, household to household. I'd love to tell you like it's a two button, click, click, here's where we're at, but.
So basically, the bottom line is when they see a certain amount that the taxes look like it's going up, it doesn't necessarily mean theirs are going up.
Correct.
Depending on how much income they have and their property value.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and then to go along with the communication, how do we want to get this information to the voters?
Yeah, I'd rather not spend money mailing, um, which we certainly done mailers. I think it, it'd be who wants to get out in the community. Um, we've asked people to come to us. Some people do, which is great. We appreciate that. But I think, you know, we've had a lot, I've had a lot of people come up and say, how can I help? I'll walk around my neighborhood at least and distribute, um, and, and talking to our community. At least that'll give them an opportunity to, maybe they read it, maybe they don't, maybe they have specific questions, maybe they couldn't get out, maybe they don't want to email, but we can at least see them face to face, encourage them to vote one way or the other. Um, but hopefully get numbers out and maybe that'll give us an opportunity. Um, again, I'd, 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 for the, for the supporters, if you're uncomfortable with like some of the ratios and stuff, just, just getting out there and encouraging people to vote and handing them some information is great. Um, if they're uncomfortable answering questions, just say I defer to the, the board because again, as we're finding out, most people are finding it very complex to figure out what this affects them. But at least getting them, I was like, hey, we'd love to have you vote, here's some information. And hopefully that goes a long way in the community.
And our emails and phone numbers are on the bottom too, so they, you can direct.
Give me a call.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think we just, we do that and go out and we can leave them on the people's doorsteps and remind them of the date. It's big. I mean, it's, it's not a regular election. It's, it's on a Thursday, so the more personal touch we can get, hopefully the more folks can show up and voice their opinion one way or the other, at least have a little bit of knowledge and.
So how do we want to divide that up and make sure that we're covering areas? And what areas do we want to focus on?
I think we need to focus on as many areas as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know, I wonder if we find out how many people are willing to help, divide it that way, but maybe we split it up between the five of us.
Abby says you take like half of the properties.
I said the five of us and, you know, then if we can find people to help us, work under us or whatever.
We only have two weekends between now and the vote.
Every kid, every day. Work every day. Finding out who, who was willing to help, I think reaching out and certainly having the supporters canvass their neighborhoods are easier than having us go to those neighborhoods. Easy for them.
It can't be just the five of us, because.
Well, I was just saying overseeing, like, you know, and maybe we individually have like a small army helping, you know, but at least we know what five we're working, you know, what areas we focusing on.
There's a lot of major pockets, I think, in the town of communities. I think, unfortunately, we may miss a few dead end streets here and there, but I think we can canvass everybody. And I don't want to get political or split the town, but I think there's been a little disconnect between us and the West Side. I'm happy to go over there and, and canvass those communities and talk to those folks. Um, maybe we'll get some more feedback too, but also get some information in their hands. And, you know, my community's super easy. It's nine houses, so I already talked to them anyways. I'm happy to focus where we need to focus is, is getting as many people educated. And it's not, and we're not that big of a town. Walking around in a couple of hours, you can see a lot of things. So I think it's just a matter of how many people want to assist and, and we delegate from there.
Kelly?
Hi, um, I just wanted to pop in quickly to say too, that the color run is this weekend at the school on Saturday. Um, so that's this weekend, right? The eighteen, yeah. Um, so, uh, hopefully there will be a fairly good turnout, um, for, you know, families, um, Rottentown families there. So that might be somewhere, um, where a few of you might want to be present. If you're looking to reach a lot of people at one time, that might be something that's helpful.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, of course.
Is anyone available for that?
What time's it?
I'll be there.
It's eleven to one.
I have a wedding to go.
I'll be there.
You'll be there?
Ace is running, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. And Lily will be there too, so she can make sure she brings.
I'd help you. I have a wedding, sorry.
And I think, um, Mr. Trophy had invited us onto his program. Um, so me and Tina are gonna go promote through there, more information.
Can we get some, I know people have stated in the past, I know, um, a couple of the people who are here getting stuff into the Rottentown Herald. Is that something that we can do? Like, can?
There's a cost to that, so.
Yeah.
I know that as we look at, it can be pretty pricey.
Okay.
That's the board's decision.
I'd assume they'll, they'll report on the date. Um, but I think, and, and some, you know, people in the community who already have, like, if you're, if you're for or against or promoting this, I think the easiest way is for our supporters to write letters to the editor. They seem to get in at no cost. Um, again, to Chris's point, we're trying to, you know, it costs us money to vote again and we're trying to not take money away from our kids. So anything we can do to save costs and promote people to help us get the word out is great. Um, so I'd encourage those listening and encourage anyone to write, write to that letter to the editor space or the opinion piece and get your thoughts out there, get the word out there. And I'm, I'm sure they'll, they'll publish our vote date, but I think this piece alone, at least with the voting date on it, getting handed to folks, uh, will go a long way. At least they'll be informed of the date and not rely on some media that we really don't know what people are looking at these days.
Um, I would be happy to try to organize who's going to what neighborhood and just so that we don't miss any, any places and or do one twice. Um, and I'll reach out to the other parents, um, that had offered to help. Yes, Sarah?
I'm just wondering, um, if it's possible at all to set up like a tent and table with information and some folks plant it either at the Summit Soccer Field, because I know that place is packed on the weekends and or also maybe the local transfer station on a Sunday or whenever they're open, um, to be able to hand, like, people come to you rather than you having to go to them as well. And I know, you know, grandparents and parents attend the soccer tournaments and everybody goes to the transfer station. So, or just posting information there if that's legal and or possible.
Thanks, Sarah. We actually, um, spent, most of us spent time there, um, several weekends before our last revote, um, at the transfer station, answering questions and, um, just being present. But, um, we definitely could consider doing that again too. Maybe Memorial Day weekend since.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Colin will be at the color run.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Well, I can have a table there, at least with info or a big banner. I mean, I think.
And once this is done, I'll, I'll, I will bring this up.
At the very least to say, hey, the vote is this Thursday. To be there that Saturday, we can sit there and.
There's also on May twenty-third, there's a five eight chorus concert.
Mm-hmm.
That a lot of us will be at. So maybe just standing out and or, you know, at least handing out flyers of upcoming dates.
Yeah, making sure these are present would be great. Yeah. Um, so may.
Will these be available?
Hopefully by the end of the week, we have to get all the numbers accurate. Um, but I think it's otherwise ready to go. Um, so Saturday, May twenty-fifth. Um, I know my son has some basketball games. I don't know the times of them yet. Um, but I will try to be there for at least part of the day.
I have to work both Saturdays.
Both Saturdays. Okay, so he won't be available. Um.
I will.
See when our schedule is before.
I will not be in town on Memorial Day weekend.
Or Wednesday, right? Is aren't they open?
Wednesday, yeah. They're also open Wednesdays.
Who?
The transfer station from two to six, I think.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have people there.
All right. So I'll send out, so it's just you, Tim and me that are possible. And both Tim and I have basketball games on the twenty-fifth, just to give you a heads up. So.
At the very least, we'll have information.
And I'll try to have some information that the date, that the date is May 30th as well.
Okay.
And I will send emails about the canvassing soon, and then we can try to work on that as soon as these get printed. All right, any other communication? Anyone had any other ideas?
One is.
Concerts?
Yeah.
So we talked about the concerts, we'll, we'll at least have, we'll have these out, and then particularly the 29th night could be announced at the vote's the next day and remind people to come out and vote. Then let's move on to teacher, staff and community.
Just to have some clarification.
Yes.
Just 'cause you asked for some, so I spoke to our attorney, so we are correct, Australian ballot at least seven days, so just to avoid any confusion, which we'll be fine with. And he states that the town clerk is the chief election officer, if they are unable to attend, their deputy can preside over the, the election, so they don't need to be at the, the election.
But the deputy's also gone.
I think that, I think that comes down to the BCA.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah. And there's some statutory periods of warning a BCA meeting also, so we're getting compressed. And we have one vacancy and the governor's not gonna talk to, give us any attention till after the veto session, unless I make another request.
There was, just last point, it was just his calendar day, it's not, not his day.
His calendar is, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, our next meeting is, unless called otherwise, June 11th. And we'll move on to teacher, staff and community comments. Sarah, do you have another comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, seeing none, we will move into executive session.
Oh, wait, I, oh, no, sorry, that's good and farewell. All fair, whatever, farewell.
I'll take a motion to move into executive session for personnel.
Motion to move into executive session for personnel?
Thank you, Jeff, at 7:14. Okay, so we will resume at 7:20.